...in his community, or the Main Street Alliance, benefactor to the city. Unfortunately, was hit crossing the street on Prospect Avenue, coming from his home. So I'd like to, if we could, please, one moment of silence, one minute of silence, please. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, open the meeting, please.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Sunshine Law Notice having been published.
I don't think so.
According to law, with a copy on file in the City Clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in City Hall. Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Here.
Councilman Sims?
Here.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Here.
Mayor LaBrass?
Here.
Would everybody please rise for the flag salute? Okay, we're going to, at this time, we're going to skip the approval of the minutes, and we're going to go right into the City Manager's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make this very short tonight, three items. Number one, just for everyone's information, and anybody here from the media may want to pick this up, the Union Street grade crossing, the railroad crossing right out here, adjacent to City Hall, is going to be worked on next week, and Union Street will be closed probably for the entire week, from Central Avenue to, I think that's Gainwell Street is going to be where they're going to be able to reopen it. So that work will be commencing, I believe, Monday morning, which could obviously cause some inconvenience in this area traffic-wise. Mr. Costa from the Recycling Department has announced that we will have what's become an annual event, a free shredding event, on November the 9th. It'll be at the Recycling Center on Green Street. This is designed strictly for residents, not for businesses, there'll be no charge. And again, that'll be on Saturday, November 9th, from 9 o'clock to 1 o'clock, at the Recycling Center. And very briefly, especially with the news about Jerry, but we obviously had the Upper Maine Alliance at a very, very successful street festival this past Saturday, probably the most successful one they've ever had in terms of attendance, and it was pretty much a problem for you that. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Resolution number 404-13, final adoption of ordinance number 20-2013, and ordinance amending Chapter 146 entitled Soil Removal of Part II, entitled General Legislation of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code.
May I have a motion to open to the public, please?
I offer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sims. Okay, at this point, anybody who wants to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only, you may come up.
Let me just call a roll. Councilman Bataglia, just to open, motion to open. Councilman Bataglia, just for the motion, open the public.
He said aye.
Okay, aye, okay. Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Okay, seeing none. I'd like a offer to close.
I'll offer.
Offered.
Second.
Second by Ms. Greenman.
Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number 40, I'm sorry, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 20-2013 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Have a motion, please?
I'll offer.
Second.
Offered by Mrs. Canastrino, seconded by Mr. Bataglia.
Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number 405-13, introduction of ordinance number 21-2013, and ordinance amending Part II entitled General Legislation of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to add new Chapter 176 entitled Regulation of Newsacks. Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 21-2013 as introduced does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on October 22nd, 2013, at 7:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the City Clerk bein she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, end of the time and place when and where said ordinance be further considered for final passage.
Have a motion, please?
I'll offer.
Offered.
Second.
Seconded.
Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number 406-13, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack that the bills in the following accounts bein are hereby ordered paid, current fund ten million forty-nine thousand four hundred forty dollars and three cents, grants forty-eight thousand two hundred eighty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents, escrow one hundred forty-one thousand fourteen dollars and forty-one cents, payroll three million seventy-nine thousand one hundred and four dollars and ninety-one cents, public parking system three thousand four hundred eighty dollars and thirty-two cents, capital eight thousand five dollars, trust account five, fifty-three thousand fifty dollars and five cents, total expenditures thirteen million three hundred and eighty-two thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty-one cents.
Okay, Ms. Heck, there's three bills we want to pull on this.
Okay.
Okay? One is for Hartman, DeWorty, Rosa, and Berman, for five thousand sixty-two dollars. We have some questions on that, we want a question. One is for Donald Leonard Esquire, for twenty-four thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars. And the other one is for Ziza Hitterer Margot Esquires.
There's three of them.
There's three bills, eighteen ninety-two oh five, one thousand forty-three dollars, and three thousand one hundred forty-five dollars and eighty-three cents.
I'm sorry, three thousand one hundred forty, three thousand one hundred forty?
Three.
One forty, oh, three thousand one forty-five I have here.
One forty-five.
Right. The three bills under his list. So there's a total of five total.
Can I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
We just want to make sure that they pulled it out like last time, where a bill got paid, so please.
And we want to make sure they don't go through.
Thank you.
With those removed, may I have a motion, please, to accept the rest of the bills?
Offered.
Second.
Offered and seconded.
Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number 407-13, whereas Diane P. Vanderwind, clerk typist, has requested a leave of absence without pay for three months for personal medical reasons under the Federal Family Leave Act, and whereas City Manager Steven Loyacano has determined that this employee be granted a leave of absence for three months, commencing Tuesday, October 1st, 2013, and ending on Tuesday, December 31st, 2013. Now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and Council of the City of Hackensack that Diane P. Vanderwind, clerk typist, be granted a leave of absence for three months without pay as requested.
Have a motion, please?
I offer.
Offered.
I'll second.
Seconded.
Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number 408-13, whereas there exists a need for the City of Hackensack's Department of Health to provide the services of a supplemental nutrition program for women, infants, and children, whereas the St. Joseph's Hospital and Medical Center of Patterson working in cooperation with the City of Hackensack's Department of Health can provide the necessary personnel and resources to conduct a, its women, infants, and children's supplemental nutrition program in Hackensack, whereas St. Joseph's Hospital and Medical Center will provide services outlined in the letter of understanding at no charge or cost to the City of Hackensack. Now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and Council that the health officer is hereby authorized and directed to execute a letter of agreement with St. Joseph's Hospital and Medical Center to provide supplemental nutrition services.
Have a motion, please?
Offered.
Offered, seconded by Mr. Bataglia.
Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sim, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number 409-13, whereas Electronic Systems Solutions West Caldwell, New Jersey, has been awarded New Jersey State Contract number 83891, whereas the City of Hackensack wishes to purchase an Eventide NexLog 740 communications logging recorder for the Fire Department, whereas the Fire Chief recommends and the Director of Purchasing agrees that the utilization of the contract represents the best price available and is in the best interest of the City of Hackensack. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and Council of the City of Hackensack authorizes the purchase of an Eventide NexLog 740 communications logging recorder from Electronic Systems Solutions West Caldwell, New Jersey. Be it further resolved that the Chief Financial Officer has certified that funds are available in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Have a motion, please?
Offered.
Offered.
Second.
Seconded.
Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number 410-13, whereas Electronic Systems Solutions West Caldwell, New Jersey, has been awarded New Jersey State Contract number 83891, whereas the City of Hackensack wishes to install and maintain the Eventide NexLog 740 communications logging recorder for the Fire Department, whereas the Fire Chief recommends and the Director of Purchasing agrees that the utilization of the contract represents the best price available. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and Council authorizes the installation and maintenance of the Eventide NexLog 740 communications logging recorder from Electronic Systems Solutions Incorporated West Caldwell, New Jersey. Be it further resolved that the Chief Financial Officer has certified that funds are available in trust account for the total amount of six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Have a motion, please?
Offer.
Offered.
Second.
Seconded.
Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number 411-13, whereas the governing body of the City of Hackensack has been advised in an emergency affecting the safety and welfare of the citizens of the city and the general public existed when Packer number 217 became inoperable and in need of emergency transmission repairs, whereas the total cost of the transmission repairs is nine thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars and seventy-two cents, which was a fair and reasonable quotation, whereas the Chief Financial Officer has certified that funds are available in the current account. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council that pursuant to state statute which authorizes the governing body to award contracts without benefit of public bidding in emergency situations that the vendor Prestige Auto Truck Center Incorporated, 164 Green Street, Hackensack, New Jersey be paid therefore.
Have a motion, please?
Offered.
Offered.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Greenman.
Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number 412-13, whereas the Division of Local Government Services requires the Chief Financial Officer to prepare with assistance from other officials affected by the audit finding and recommendations, and to file a corrective action plan outlining the actions to be taken by the city relative to the finding and recommendations in the annual audit report, and whereas said corrective action plan is required to be approved by the governing body and maintained in the Office of the City Clerk for public inspection. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and Council of the City of Hackensack hereby approves the corrective action plan for the 2012 audit report.
Have a motion, please?
Offer.
Offered.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Greenman.
Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number 413-13, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack that the following organizations be granted permission to conduct a raffle in accordance with the applications on file in the Office of the City Clerk, raffle application 2044, Hackensack University Medical Center, raffle application 2045, Colombians, raffle applications 2046 and 2047, Fairleigh Dickinson University.
Have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number 414-13, whereas the governing body of the City of Hackensack has been advised that an emergency affecting the safety and welfare of the general public of the City of Hackensack was present when a motor vehicle accident occurred and repairs were needed when the controllers became inoperable on Passaic and Union Street, whereas the cost of the repair is six thousand seven hundred forty-nine dollars and eleven cents, which is fair and reasonable, and Allen Brightway Electric has supplied all materials and overhead for such, whereas the Chief Financial Officer has certified that funds are available in the current account. Now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to state statute which authorizes the governing body to pay Allen Brightway Electric Contractors, Whippany, New Jersey, for this emergency, therefore be paid.
Have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Offered by Ms. Canastrino, seconded by Mr. Bataglia.
Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number 415-13, be it resolved by the City Council that the proper officers bein are hereby authorized to make the following refund for the reason stated, hundred and twenty-five dollars is a refund for the Hackensack Junior Cheerleading Registration refund to Mr. Robert Craig.
A motion, please?
Offered.
Offered by Mr. Sims, seconded by Mr. Bataglia.
Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number 416-13, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack that the proper officers bein are hereby authorized to make the following refunds for the reasons stated, and Mayor, you have Page 1 and Page 2.
Correct.
Ending with CoreLogic Refunds Department and ending with SENSARI 2011.
Have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sims.
Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number 417-13, whereas state statute provides that the Director of the Division of Local Government Services may approve the insertion of any special item of revenue in the budget of any county or municipality when such items shall have been made available by law and the amount was not determined at the time of the adoption of the budget. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Hackensack hereby request the Director of the Division of Local Government Services to improve the insertion of an item of revenue in the budget of the calendar year 2013 in the sum of eleven thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars, which is now available from miscellaneous revenues, 2013 Edward Byrne Memorial JAG Program in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars.
Have a motion, please?
Offered.
Offered by Mr. Sims?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Canastrino?
Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number 418-13, whereas on June 15th, 2012, Plenary Retail Distribution License Number 0223-44-66004, formerly owned by Eighty-Eight Capital Incorporated and previously operating as Frontier Liquors at 500 River Street, Hackensack, New Jersey, was sold at auction by the United States Bankruptcy Court, District of New Jersey, and whereas previous to that date, a notice of appointment of trustee was issued by the United States Bankruptcy Court, District of New Jersey, appointing Barbara A. Edwards Esquire as interim Chapter VII trustee of the bankruptcy estate of Eighty-Eight Capital Incorporated, which includes Plenary Retail Distribution License Number, same as I had stated before. Whereas pursuant to statute, when a licensee goes into bankruptcy, receivership, or similar court-supervised insolvency proceedings, the license must be extended to the trustee, receiver, or other court-appointed person by the issuing authority. Now therefore be it resolved that Plenary Retail Distribution License issued by the City of Hackensack for Eighty-Eight Capital Incorporated is hereby extended to Barbara A. Edwards Esquire effective this date.
Have a motion, please?
Offer.
Offered.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Greenman.
Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number 419-13, be it resolved by the City Council that the following liquor license be issued in the City of Hackensack effective July 1st, 2013, through June 30th, 2014, applicant having complied with the ordinances of the City of Hackensack and its same license, Eighty-Eight Capital Incorporated, being renewed as per Barbara A. Edwards Esquire as the trustee.
Okay, I understand that fee was paid, none?
Yes.
Okay. Have a motion, please?
Offer.
Offered by Ms. Greenman?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sims.
Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number 420-13, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack that Plenary Retail Consumption License issued to McCormick &amp; Schmicks, 175 Riverside Square, Hackensack, New Jersey, be transferred to Ocean Air, Hackensack Incorporated, 175 Riverside Square, Hackensack, New Jersey, effective this date as a person-to-person transfer.
Okay, and this is just a transfer, no fees involved?
It's basically just a reorganization of McCormick &amp;.
Same corporation, just different name, okay.
Right.
Have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. This time, I'd like to open the meeting to the public. May I have a motion, please?
I'll offer.
Offered by Ms. Canastrino, seconded by Ms. Greenman.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, due to the large crowd tonight, we're going to keep it to the usual five minutes, but we're going to have to be strict on it, because we have quite a few people here. It's going to be late night, and we still have to go into closed session after the public. When you come up to the podium, please state your name and your address to the City Clerk, please.
Good evening, my name is Stefan Neustahler, I'm at 279 Hamilton Place, Hackensack. Just briefly, first, I would like to support the City Manager in that the street fair was excellent, and I think we see more events as that. However, it did give me a chance to look at Main Street very closely. I was with this Citizens Committee that ran the election before the previous administration, and I did a photographic survey of Main Street, and we posted those pictures on our campaign headquarters. During the lame duck administration that we experienced in the interim, I hadn't really had a chance to look at the street. The street really, really needs work. It's all convenience outlets, check cashing, and low-budget stores that, with few exceptions, will not draw the kind of people that can revitalize Hackensack. The reason I'm saying this is, this administration had talked about having a Citizens Committee working, I know there is a group, a businessman's group, involved, but they meet very infrequently, and they do not publicize their meetings as they should be. I would really like to see the Citizens Group organized, I would be more than happy to volunteer, be active in it, and work with the administration. I think citizen overview is very important, because it's just, it's owed to the city, and it'll increase our tax base, and it's owed to the citizens of the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council.
Good evening, sir.
I'm Dr. Angel Carrion. Today, I'm here as a spokesperson for the Institute Cultural Arts Latino, and also known as ECal, by the way. ECal has had a partnership with the City of Hackensack now since about 2008. It's a nonprofit organization that teaches classes in art theater, music, dance, Spanish classes, fitness, and many other cultural-type classes. Unfortunately, I am here to file a complaint against a council member for the following reasons. The concerns are abuse of power, invasion of privacy, intimidation of a well-respected Latino woman, and fear of retaliation. I have made copies of the communications that were made by the council member, Mr. Sims, and the President of ECal, Jimena Ladino, for your review. Who would I give that to?
You would give that to the City Manager at this time, who would probably refer it to the City Attorney.
Issues of concern from us, our understanding of the way that the City Council functions is that you function as an organization, as a group, decisions have to be made as the City Council, not as individuals. My understanding is that Mr. Sim has taken the liberty of directly contacting the President of ECal and the Vice President of ECal, asking questions in reference to a young woman named Laura Manning and her classes, without identifying himself as a City Council member. I was under the impression that that kind of business is done through the City Manager. He asked about a program called Dance Revolution. It was directed by the Vice President Ocedes to speak to Laura Manning herself directly, which is the usual protocol, to get information on different programs. He was asked if he had the number, and he answered he did. When he was told that the classes were then on the first week of September, he answered where the class is going after that, which is basically not our concern. And he, on the same day, called both of these young women, which is the President and the Vice President of the organization, directly. Our questions are, how did he get the phone numbers? Was he authorized to communicate with the President of ECal by the Council? Or by the City Manager, I don't know how that works. Were you authorized to communicate with Jimena or Ocedes, who is the VP? As a result of this breach of protocol, you'll see there in the endow that I gave to the City Manager, that he took the liberty of changing the schedule that was already instituted for ECal. As I said, ECal has had a longstanding relationship and partnership with the City of Hackensack, very successful partnership, I might add, and they have timeframes, and they use the Civic Center. But as a result of Mr. Sims' actions, there was a change to the schedule, and that interfered with the scheduled programs, created confusion, and probably a lack of revenue because of um, because of that. Um, in addition, you know, we, we have to consider, um, the abuse of power here. Uh, intimidating a woman. And you'll see in the letters there, the conversation that took place that was very unprofessional, disrespectful, uh, which is not tolerated. My understanding is that we are beyond that. We've had enough years of that. And that's why you're here today. That's why you voted in. We're not gonna tolerate this. We're looking for a public apology. Looking for an investigation into the breach of protocol. And we're looking for some, uh, additional training for council members so that this does not occur again. Have to function as a unit. And we work through the city manager, is my understanding, after the council decides and takes a vote, so. Um, thank you very much, and, uh, we would like an investigation into this matter.
I thank you for your time. The council will each receive a copy of that. We'll, we'll look at it.
I have the copies, uh, Mr. Yonchuk, would you like them?
The copies?
I have copies. Um, how will we be contacted in reference to this matter?
Mr. Lo, well, after the council uh, looks through it, we'll have a discussion on it. We probably won't be able to discuss, we may be able to discuss in closed session tonight. Um, Mr. Lo Yonchuk will contact you directly. If you can give him a contact number, please?
Yes. That's the number that we. Which one? I think I have it anyway.
Angel.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, I would strong, uh, the doctor's comments uh, began by, uh, stating that he was filing a formal complaint, and there were allegations of abuse of power, fear of retaliation, intimidation, and other things that, um, certainly signal, um, litigation. I would strongly recommend, uh, the council not make any comments on this because I believe at least a, a potential litigation matter until the council have an opportunity to address it.
Understood. All right.
Uh, good evening.
You state your name and address to the clerk, please? Thank you.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. My name is Jonce Dimoski. My address is one forty-eighth Division Place.
Could you just spell your, your name for me?
Uh, J O N C E. That's my first name.
Mm-hmm. And your last name is?
D I M O S K I.
Okay, thank you.
That was Division Place, sir?
Yes, correct. Okay, um, can I start, or?
Yes, go for it.
Okay, uh, well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. Um, so the reason I'm here is to follow up on, um, an issue that my brother and my dad came, um, in August twentieth, that meeting. It was about the parking situation. Um, we still haven't followed up, um, and gotten any resolution on that. Um, so that's why I wanted to come here. Actually, my brother and my dad spoke to, um, the city manager.
Right.
He said that you guys declined and decided not to amend the ordinance.
Oh.
But, um, I, I looked in all the notes, and I even looked into your agenda, so I don't know when you guys spoke about this or what the reasoning behind it was. So I just wanted to come up with you guys and find that out.
Mayor, that's, that's not what I reported. What I reported was that there was no, no change in the ordinance because of the recommendation of Traffic Department.
Right.
That there should be no change in the ordinance. The council didn't act because the, the Traffic Department recommended that they not make the change that you were looking for.
Uh, no problem. Um, actually, I spoke with Lieutenant, uh, Aquila, and he said that it was up to solely to the council, and by him, uh, he had no problem with it because, um, the issue was, um, there's only, it's resident-only parking, correct? On that street? Is that what you guys understand?
Not that it's resident-only parking, no.
What's, what's, I have the, what kind of parking is only on that street? That you guys are, uh?
On your side, well, Division, because it was a mix-up because.
On Porter Street.
On Porter Street.
Yes, correct.
Porter Street is, that's over where, um,
On the South Hackensack border.
On the South Hackensack border by Pola Castro's, right there.
Yes, it's actually Pola Castro's, yes.
Right.
Well, one of the streets, I forget which one I get confused. One has resident parking on this.
Uh, yes, actually, the ordinance here is, it states, um, it's ordinance number, um, eighteen, two thousand nine. Um, and it states, it's resident-only parking permits shall be provided for residents. Uh, I'm, I apologize. Yeah, resident-only parking sticker, uh, are permitted to park on the streets between six PM and six AM. So it says.
On the one side of the street, correct?
Yes, one side of the street, yeah, that's fine. Um, from what I understand, resident-only means residents, not, it, it's actually quite opposite of commercial and industrial parking.
So you're saying they're parking the commercial vehicles on the side?
What I'm saying is there's commercial vehicles being parked there. Uh, what I'm also saying is, um, is this something funny, Mr. Sims?
No.
Okay, no problem. Uh, what I'm saying is there, there's industrial cars being parked there, commercial vehicles being parked there, and vehicles from all over town being parked there. So this ordinance was brought into place to stop South Hackensack residents from parking there. This does not, um, re, South Hackensack residents still park there, and actually, it just defeats the purpose because now we are legally not, not allowed, allowed to park there. Which doesn't make any sense to me. You guys brought this ordinance, or not you guys, the previous, um, council brought it in to law to allow the residents of this street to park there, but yet, we're not allowed to park there, and only one house is allowed to park here on this whole street. The street's over two hundred feet, and it's one house. So you're saying that nobody else is allowed to park in this street?
You have a copy of the resolution by chance from two thousand nine?
Yes, I actually have, yes, the meeting notes, and also, um, the agenda as well.
Okay, Porter Street, entire length of the street, resident parking is amended as follows. Six and six. Because we actually have a conflicting statement here from Lieutenant Aquila, it looks like.
We do. That, that's certain.
Yeah.
Uh, what was the Aquila's statement then?
Well, I have a copy of the ordinance from two thousand nine.
Okay.
Um, looking for the exact date on, on June. It was introduced June sixteenth, two thousand nine, was amended eight eighteen.
Correct.
They also have some correspondence here that that might have been, those resident permits might have been given in error, so let us, let the city manager look into this conflict.
That lends to the confusion here. They immediately gave those one or two, I forget.
It's, it was actually four cars. So four.
There's two, there sold two to three.
Well.
Yeah.
Correct. I sold the, my lot, my last car, so that's, th- there's no parking tag on that anymore.
Now, was there a limit on the parking, amount of parking stickers they can give to a resident?
No, it wasn't. Those, uh, at that address should not have been given the stickers at all. It was error. And they just let it ride, and now obviously it comes into the whole conversation.
Okay.
Uh, mayor.
They were issued in error. They should never have been issued, first of all, according to the ordinance.
Uh, actually, two cars were before this ordinance, and one car, actually, one car was after the ordinance. Um, but the reason I'm here today is not to dispute that. The reason here is to make an amendment to the, uh, ordinance. Um, you guys state that it's resident-only parking. Resident-only parking is resident household. It's not commercial. There's only one resident house on this road, on Porter Street. So you're telling me that for one house, maximum of four cars, you have this whole street that's supposed to be empty? At any given time, you, and during the night, you drive past that street, and it is jam-packed with commercial, it is jam-packed with South Hackensack residents with South Hackensack tags on them. So there's, there's multiple issues here. Number one, it's not being enforced, which I don't care. But the fact of the matter is that if, if it's preventing me and my tenant from getting parking, because I have a new car that I'm trying to get a sticker for as well, if it's preventing me from parking on my own street, I pay taxes. South Hackensack doesn't pay taxes. Commercial residents, I mean, commercial, yeah, they pay taxes, but the ordinance says resident-only. So right there, you're not enforcing it, and then you're pre, you're preventing me from parking on this street. I can't park on Division Street, which I'm okay with. That's fine. Because as long as I've, you know, my family's been living here, we've always parked on Porter Street. So you guys introduced this ordinance to help us out? Then in reality, it's, it's counterproductive because now we legally can't park on the street.
Just offhand, how many South Hackensack vehicles would you say park on that street?
At any given time, say, two to three.
Two to three?
Yes, but that's because, I mean, not to name company names, but there's ma, many, many vans. There's also, um, you know, um, residents of Lowdy Street. There's a house on the corner of Lowdy and Port, on Porter Street that also, they don't have parking either, so they park on Porter Street as well. Um, so, you know, I don't, I'm not in the business to, you know, count cars. I don't have time for that. Um, I, I just wanna, you know, let you guys know that the street is, uh, being utilized from not what you guys want it to be utilized. If it's for residents only, we'll make it, enforce it by residents only. But right now, there's only two options here.
Are these commercial vehicles parked on both sides of the street, or just?
No, only one side of the street.
Only one side.
If, if the street's very narrow, if it's both sides, nobody can pass by.
Right, okay.
And i, if you guys do make it, it is a commercial area, correct?
Uh, yes, it is.
So if you guys want to open it up, give it to the ordinance, open it up, at least they can park there legally. Or get, or amend it, so at least we can park there as well. Because actually, in the ordinance, and there is states that is Porter Street residents only. I looked at all the res, all the ordinances in Hackensack. There's, you know, some, re, some ordinance is state, clearly. Residents of this street can only get these pa, these parking passes. But for this one, it just says resident-only parking. So, I mean, I'm not sure, like, if, if we read it word-for-word, the ordinance, then we're residents, we should get parking passes.
Right.
Correct?
Okay, we're gonna look into this. We're gonna, uh, stable. Gonna have to get Lieutenant down there again. We're gonna have to come up with some kind of compromise down there because it's a, it's a commercial zone. It was done.
And.
It was done to help a residential situation, and it's actually made it worse. Whereas if we had left it semi-commercial, it probably wouldn't be in this situation. So, uh, we need to look into this.
Okay, Lieutenant McPhillips.
All right.
I mean, the, I'm sorry, the last comment. The biggest issue I have here is, I mean, at the last meeting, um, city manager said it's a slippery slope, you know, if we open this up, of other, I mean, the issue is, you know, you're not gonna help out, you, you'll help us out, but you're also gonna be doing the right thing, because right now, there's tons of cars illegally parking there.
Right.
Okay. So, I mean, unless you guys enforce it, which, please, go enforce it, because then there's gonna be maximum.
Enforcement's an issue, that's something we're definitely gonna.
No, I'd ra, I'd rather the police go and do other stuff with their time than enforce my street, trust me. There's, I'd rather cops, you know, look out for criminals than be parking meters, meter maids. That's, that's not what I want. What I want is just to legally park on the, the street that I've been paying taxes for, for my father, for over forty years. I mean, it's, it's ridiculous.
Okay. All right, thanks. We're gonna, uh, Lieutenant's gonna be down there.
No problem. And also, um, when, uh, will you guys talk? Like, when, when you guys are discussing it, can we be part, part of this? Because, to be honest with you.
We have to discuss it only in open because it's not a closed-session issue.
Correct.
So we'll be wait till the next council meeting, which will be in two weeks.
So in two weeks, I'm allowed to come here?
Right, absolutely.
Also, is it gonna be on the agenda?
Uh, we'll see what the, we have to wait for a report from Traffic, and, uh, based on that report, whether it's gonna be on or not.
So it's, it's up to the, um, uh, Lieutenant, uh, Aquila to decide on this?
Well.
Well, we're gonna, we need him for information.
We're, we're changing, we're changing. The information's changed a little bit. We're gonna be asking for something a little different than what we were looking at last time, so it'll be a different.
Okay. So what, what, what kind of information, like, just so I know for my own, um, to understand the situation, because.
I wasn't aware that there was a, a conflict there between, that, that maybe these weren't supposed to go out, also that the ordinance was passed. Um, to accommodate.
The commercial parking really has not been part of the equation.
Right.
That's another.
The commercial, we have to take into consider, you know, it's.
I mean, I, I, I know, uh, you know.
You can't expect the business to close its doors either.
No, of course not. Actually, the business is leaving. Business is leaving because it's outgrown the, the street. But the fact of the matter is, I mean, w, we need, we need, we need parking spaces because, I mean, we're a big family, and plus, we have a tenant. Um, we try to alleviate the problem by getting a driveway, but you know what? Even that, we can't, we can't turn a little cheek anymore. At the end of the day, we, we, we want to, you know, we're honest, tax-paying citizens of Hackensack. We just want to park on the street, um, that we've always been parking on since we.
Right.
You know, my parents bought this house in the early eighties, so.
Okay, we're gonna do our best.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. This is, uh, my name is Ruth Neustatter, and I live at two seventy-nine Hamilton Place in Hackensack. I want to thank the council for, um, making Anderson Street, um, for changing it so tremendously, uh, uh, after I had requested it. And, uh, Deputy Mayor, uh, Canastrino called me personally, and I am very thankful for the, um, I mean, this is the way government should work. And it, it has worked. The street is clean. The trees are, there are trees that are planted now. Um, there's no garbage stuck in the plants. Um, it's, it's a pleasure uh, to, to look at the street now, and I want to thank you very much for your effort. Um, and I also want to say that the fair was fabulous. The street fair was fantastic. Uh, what I did notice was that there were chairs out on the sidewalk, is, which is the kind of thing that we should be having on Main Street, um, in general. And also, um, I looked around and if we're going to make Main Street two-way at some point, and that's what has been talked about, it would be great to have some little trees planted now in preparation for that, because, uh, we do want to bring Hackensack back, and I am planning on doing, um, a fair, an art show in the park, on Anderson Street, in the spring. And, uh, I think the more that we can do this kind of work for the city, the more it's going to be brought back to the, uh, point that we all want it to be. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm good, mayor. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Gwen Jackson, one thirty-eight Union Street. I've been here before.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, oh, gosh, we still have the problem with the Ferretti.
Still?
Yes. I have a, Stacey Ann Dixon, one oh-three Lawrence Street.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we, we're having problems with the Ferretti garbage trucks, of course. And Stacy Ann is on Lawrence Street, and Lawrence Street has the same problem that I do on Union Street, of course. And, um, there's still parking there.
Okay.
And I don't know what can be done because, um, Steve mentioned that they have been grandfathered in. And I have a concern because now they have two additional trucks, one a dumpster and a new garbage truck, so that makes six trucks now. And who's to say they won't have two additional trucks and then two more trucks? So now this is becoming a problem in the neighborhood with them parking on the streets with the stench of garbage. And I said before, nobody wants garbage trucks parked, parked in front of their house. It's awful. It's awful.
I agree with you.
My concern is when the kids are coming home from school and the garbage truck is passed, parked, there's no way they could see the path across the street in the intersection. That's a big concern.
You think it's a safety, safety issue?
Pardon me? Yes, it is.
It's a safety issue?
Yes, it is, because they park on both sides of the streets, and even when you're coming out, out Lawrence Street to go on to, out, out Union Street, you can't see anything.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I mean, that's, that's a way we've never looked at that, is. I know we have, we're backing out of driveways.
My understanding continues to be that when the trucks are parked, uh, illegally, they're being ticketed. I know that there were scores of tickets issued last time.
So he just keeps paying the tickets.
Yeah, that's the way he's doing it.
Yeah, that's the way he's doing.
What are they, untouchable?
They're 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 within the law, because they were grandfathered, that's that's where the problem is, we can't, we'd be breaking the law.
I know, but.
If we tried to, if we told them they couldn't park there, that's the problem.
Perhaps there be ca- can be an ordinance created, cuz they've been grandfathered in.
You can't, you can't, no, that would be changing the law.
Are they allowed to park where 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 the resident's street is? Cuz when when we call the cops, the cops don't show up.
That whole, that whole area is zoned for.
Commercial residential.
Right, so that they can park there, because.
Lawrence Street is not zone commercial, it is only zone residential, so why are they parking on Lawrence Street?
That's a good question, is Lawrence, that it's the, you know that zone down on Lawrence?
Union, Union is is the commercial street, now you're saying they're parking on Lawrence.
Is both Lawrence Street zone residential or only Union Street?
They're actually on the corner of Lawrence and Union, right?
Okay, but I live on Lawrence Street, and.
Are you on, are you on the opposite side?
Yes, I am.
From them?
Yes, I am, and I told them several times to move in and I call the cops, and nobody shows up, or they just ignore you totally. They have many several leaks.
Illegally, you can do more than ticket them.
Ticketing them is our is our power, and then, uh, I don't think we have anything beyond that, if they're parked illegally, that's the, that's a violation. Um, I I'm surprised to hear that you're saying that the police are not responding.
They're not responding, and when the kids are coming home now, and the trucks are parked on both sides, these kids are not seeing, they're not thinking like us. So why the why the kids are crossing, we're gonna have something happen before we act on what's gonna hap- you know.
I can take this over to the director again, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, I mean, this has been an ongoing, this is before this council, it was on, on the last last council I was on. For quite a while, we thought we had some resolve for a while.
What, Steve, what, what about health violations?
There's also been cited on a number of occasions, they're not allowed to have garbage in the trucks overnight.
And that's, they they still do, because it it be leaking, and I have. I have pictures of it leaking, and you could smell it a distant away, and that's hazard to our health.
Yes, and so what happens, you know, the health of health officers only there certain hours. And so you have to call, you know, to get somebody to come out, but it's after hours when they do this.
Well, what we were doing, uh, and this this goes back a number of months, when we had similar complaints, I believe you were here.
Yes.
Uh, in addition to the health officer doing that, we actually had somebody in property maintenance checking at night. And there was, there were, again, there were citations issued, now, I'll I'll double check on whether that part of the enforcement has continued.
Yeah, let's see, let's get see if we get a record on.
Things things quieted, things quieted down, quite frankly, you know, I go by there a lot, and I say, well, things have been quiet, you know, obviously not, you know.
Yeah, Steve, it started bad.
I work nights, and I'm off one night a week, and why at three o'clock, they revving their engine, three thirty? Half of the, half of them coming at three thirty, and they rev their engine to start the truck up, especially now that it's getting cold. You know, they have to make sure their engine is rev, I don't need to be waking up at three o'clock. My one night off. Is there a time they supposed to start their truck?
Uh, that's a good question, well, it's a, if they're in a commercial zone, it can start their commercial trucks.
At three o'clock, at three o'clock in the morning?
I believe so.
Okay, we need to recheck that.
Yeah, I I I'd have to check it myself, but if it's a commercial zone. I mean, and they have to get to work, how they're supposed to go if they can't start their trucks? You'd have to, you'd they'd have to stop their business.
Okay, but they're not supposed to rev their engine, are they?
Uh, I I can't answer that, because I'm not a, you know, a diesel, those are diesel engines, and I know when you start them up, usually you do have to have a decent amount of RPMs. To get them warmed up faster, that's all I can say on that, and I I can't say they have to rev them up, but uh. I really can't answer. I'm, I I, with what's going on here, I feel your pain, believe me, we've been dealing with this for over two years.
I'll get with the director, I'll get with the health officer. And try to continue the, this has been an ongoing, like you say, but.
Not trying to run them out of business, just, they need to be mindful. I don't know if any of them.
Yes, that's the problem, and I know you're not trying to run them out of, there's nobody would wanna do that, but it's just a business in that location next to residences. There's no meeting, there's no way it works without these kinds of problems.
Right.
That's that's the problem, you know, it's it's al- it's almost an unsolvable problem, but we'll keep on it, I mean, that's all I can, you know, promise at this point. And you got my word, we'll do it, I mean, we we have in the past, and we will again.
Okay, I'll be back.
I shouldn't have gotten comfortable that I thought it was hit quieted down. Foolish me. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Good evening, my name is Toy Blount, I reside at one five nine Ames Street in Hackensack. And I wanted to speak on and rebuttal, if I may, to Mr. Andrew Carrion, and on behalf of Lori Manning and uh Mr. uh Councilman Dave Sims.
Spell your last name for me?
B L O U N T.
O U N T, okay, thank you.
Uh, Lori's been a resident of Hackensack for twenty-one years, she is married to a lifelong resident of of multi-generations of Hackensack. She's a teacher in Hackensack for more than six years, and created a dance program in um multiple schools in Hackensack. All of which have been existence for more than eleven years. Uh, the dance program serves the children of Hackensack on multi-levels, not just as she teaching them dance, but she's also teaching them. To be empowered and, you know, to grow uh emotionally, spiritually, and in a multitude of different ways. So what she provides to the children is more than just the art of dance, even if that was it, that would be extraordinary, but it really is so much more. Um, Mr. Day, uh, pardon me, Councilman Dave Sims uh intervened on Lori's behalf. And ensured that the service that she was providing to the children of Hackensack um didn't go, wasn't unfairly um displaced. The Lori is a member, or was a member, I should say, of ICal, and was using the space at the Civic Center. Three days a week to provide the dance program, this space and this use was rescinded without any due process whatsoever. There was no lapse in time between the time that she was threatened to be uh removed from the Civic Center. To the, to, you know, the continuation of the dance program, so it seems unlikely, highly unlikely. That there was um, that her continuation could have interfered with any other scheduled programs, because she had that designated space. And maintained and retained that designated space and time. Um, there was an inaccuracy reported, Mr. uh Carrion stated that she was supposed to lose this space as of September first. That is inaccurate, Lori does also have her own documentation of, you know, some intimidation factors that were imposed upon her. And we just found out about this meeting, or that this subject would be presented at this meeting today, so unfortunately, we don't have document, uh, copies of. This documentation to provide, but we certainly would be more than happy to provide that to, um, you know, to the council as well. So, but I just really wanna say that any action that was done, was, or any action that was taken. The only focus was to ensure that the children of Hackensack, many of whom are, they range from, I wanna say, five. Five years old? Five to senior in high school, so it goes through every school in Hackensack, she touches. Every, uh, you know, children in every school in Hackensack, and they get an extraordinary program. And as you, as you all know, a lot of kids need, like, maybe sports, or, you know, something that kind of keeps them grounded, keeps them involved. But not everybody is athletic, not everybody is musically talented, people have different um, different gifts. And what Lori does is she helps to capitalize on the gift that maybe some of these children don't even know that they have, that she brings out in them. And what Mr. Simp, pardon me, Councilman Sims did, was to help ensure that that was not inappropriately, uh, or unfairly displaced. So we wa- I wanted to speak on behalf of Lori and the dance program, and we wanted to thank Councilman Sims for his efforts in ensuring that it wasn't. Just shunned for no reason.
Thank you.
They're applauding me already, and I haven't even heard what I said. Larry Eisen, three ninety Maple Hill Drive. Um, I understand that Ferretti is grandfathered, but I'm not sure what the definition of grandfathered is. Could he, could the word be interpreted as limiting him to what existed at the point in time he was grandfathered? Which would prevent him from adding trucks? I guess it's it's a legal question, I don't have an answer to, but if he could be contained at least to what he was originally. It might alleviate the situation.
The young lady mentioned that he added trucks, that was the first thing I thought of, when you do that, would they be grandfathered, and that's something our attorney will have to look at, as far as zoning. Zoning laws go with grandfathering. I'm sorry. A little relaxed there, but uh, we're gonna have our attorney just look into that real quick, to see if that's grandfather carries into buying new vehicles. Technically, you could buy fifty trucks, then what are we gonna do?
Right, thank you.
Oh, no.
Amy Canestrino, Brook Street, I just wanna ask the city attorney, can I ask the city attorney a question?
Yes, you may.
Uh, concerning these trucks on Union Street, and I I understand that the the proprietor, the owner of the trucks, they're grandfathered in. I know he's been there for many years, how do you over, is, can you override this grandfather, grandfather situation? Is there a way you can do that if this becomes a nuisance, such a hazard to the community? Now we could, that you as city attorney can argue, that he's now become a problem beyond this grandfather clause.
Mayor, uh, frankly, this is the first I'm kind of getting. Of the issue, and I'd be happy to look at it, report back to the council, and talk about all options that uh, that the city could possibly pursue in this matter.
Yeah, thank you, I I, cuz it seems that everything has an answer, I mean, you can't, I can't believe that this grandfather clause would create someone to. Create such a hazard, that these people have been coming here for a couple of years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, council members, mayor.
How are you, sir?
My name is Sorano Keith Baldio, I live at uh, uh, one Rochelle Park in Rochelle? Park, Rochelle Avenue. Um, I started out my visit to your city with flat tire. And I went to a a gentleman by the name of uh Commercial Tire Services on Green Street. And during the course of my visit, I started to hear about his neighbor, Potterfly Towing. And I'm gonna get to the point, it turns out Potterfly Towing uh owns a property across the street. Um, so I started doing some asking around investigations, I have made an application to the city. And um, for, since September twenty-six, for the contract between the city on Potterfly Towing. And I got a lot of running around, and I finally discovered that the the land across the street has three entrances, so therefore it must be three lots. And the land is public property. And the, I finally got a copy of the contracts, I'm gonna speak, only speak to the copy of the contract that I have. It said that the land is leased for the purposes of providing parking, um, for the basis of that business. And the lease agrees to restrict it for those purposes. I then went to Al Borelli, I believe, and I asked him about that land, I keep getting thrown around to different departments. And um, I went to this, finally came back to the city and asked for the tax lease on that land. Because what Al told me is, he gave that property seven tickets within week after week after week. And out of the seven tickets, I tried tracking the tickets down, and I apologized to the clerk, Deborah, if she's been very patient with me. There are seven tickets given to that property. And all the tickets somewhere between Al giving them the tickets and the judge, was all fixed, none of it was paid. Any one of these people get a ticket, they don't get the courtesy of getting their tickets fixed. And so I went back to Al, and I asked him, why was the ticket fixed, and he told me because this person does business with the city. And that's why he couldn't allow him to pay for the tickets. Well, the property across the street belongs to the public, and it was meant for parking. If you drive by today, it's all junk cars, seventy-five percent of it is junk cars, tax-free. And how much does this gentleman pay for this with rent with the city? Eighty-one dollars a month. None of these people get eighty-one dollars a month from government property to park their cars. I tried to reach out to the um city manager, for two weeks, in September twenty-six, with no answer. I've constantly lost my business card, and I wasn't very happy about that. So, free taxes on that property since two thousand and two. The property is worth thousands and thousands of dollars in taxes alone, far as the rent. The gentleman back here is from uh Commercial Tires next door, and uh he was willing to pay two thousand five hundred dollars a month, not eighty-one dollars a month. To this property, but he was told, no, he doesn't get that courtesy. And then what this guy does, I was there Saturday, and he had an ex-cop threatened me, that's why I'm here today. And he has friends in the police departments, he's got friends in the city council, and he's got friends in the city. So I went to the police department five minutes after the threat, and I said, which one of you was gonna come down harass me, get my license plate and come to my house, like he said you were gonna do. And the cop says, don't worry about him, if you're ever doing business in the city, I'm the news media, by the way, I own the New Jersey Pulse newspaper, that's New Jersey Pulse online. And I got involved in this because of the nature of my job, but I'm a victim, I was threatened. So, the cop told me, don't worry about it, and he, come and see the director. So, and he specifically said the guy has a lot of police friends. Now, the gentleman back here, Gauzy, he gets tickets like crazy. So today I took a camera and I went around the block, and Potterfly Towing has all his trucks illegally parked, no parking, no tickets, but he gets tickets. And legendary uh um legendary Milk gets tickets like crazy. Now this guy got seven tickets, Potterfly Towing, all dismissed. Gauzy didn't get that courtesy of all his tickets dismissed, he has to pay them, so there's some kind of favoritism going on with this guy. And so, Al went back, Mr. Borelli went back to do an investigation today, and I went with my camera. He walks into one side of the property, and then he walks out and he leaves, and I called him, I said, Al, what about the third one? He said, I've done my investigation, I have nothing to say, so I take my camera, and I took pictures over the property. There were tires stacked up, there's junk all over it in the third property, the property was meant for parking. Each night, it's supposed to look like the parking lot at the back here. Why is he getting it tax-free since two thousand and two, and why is he only paying eighty-one dollars a month? And why is all these cops supposed to be threatening you when you're doing an investigation? So I paid a visit to the prosecutor's office today, and I spoke to, and I was very happy with them either. So they sent it back, and they said they were gonna do an investigation, and they were sending it back to the police. Well, if Al goes and keeps his mouth shut, and I got photos to prove it, date and time stamp, ask Al Borelli, how many tickets did you give out today? And he'll tell you, no, and I'll show you the pictures, seventy-five percent of that parking lot is junk car, it's rusted, it's rotten. And he's getting it for free, so my question is, who's his friends that he's talking about since two thousand and two, he's getting away with this? Why aren't anybody's from the public here in Hackensack getting that property, that's a money-making property? There's problems at parking there, there's a gentleman that's gonna pay you two thousand five hundred dollars a month for that property. So I'm asking you to investigate this, to look at it, and not just give me an answer, because I'm gonna write this in my newspaper anyway. Give them an answer, it's their land, it's public land. Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir, good evening, council. My name is FJ Williams, we own the property at three forty-five Railroad Avenue. I just want clarification of something here. I said, when I first came to Hackensack, I had trucks, I was in the towing business and repossession business. They had, they gave me tickets every day, they had even had a cop sit out in front of my door, I'm used to that. Even had closed the street one day and took thirteen vehicles for me. So now they say, you gotta, you got to have them insured, but I could pay in six thousand dollars a year for insurance. I can only drive one, but I can't sell them, cuz nobody has no money. But then they put this company across the street, this cab company, I think it's BTS. There was a place over there before they had this, it delivered food. They got the variance to open their cab company, and they said they would never park buses there. Now John Leckie has buses there, in the morning at three thirty, four o'clock, but like the gentleman said earlier. Their buses are revved up, peoples are talking loud, and everything like that, and I don't understand that. Did they have different rules, I've asked the council once before, is there different rules for different peoples?
I'd have to know exactly what the zone is, I'm guessing.
Uh, on that side of the street is commercial.
If it's commercial zone, then their hours, pick me if I'm wrong, their their hours can almost be twenty-four seven.
I believe so.
Okay, fine, I got the answer for that, the other thing is, on uh Railroad Avenue, you got Miss Scott. Standing there as a school crossing guard. One the, one way Railroad Avenue go north and south, and the other go east, um, south and north, or whatever. And she was standing out there last Friday, and I was standing out there with her. It's hard for her to stand on one side of Railroad Avenue and stop the traffic, and the kids coming from the school. From the middle school, the peoples don't stop on the other side. She was standing in the middle of the track the other Friday, holding the sign up, a lot of the cars stopped, one guy passed her. As she moved, he would've hit her, so I asked. Shouldn't there be, since it's a track, and she can't stand on the track, if there's a train coming, and the kids don't always wait. She, I think there should be another person out there on the other side of the tracks to stop the uh, stop the traffic. Because you don't know where, if she's on the south side, on the east side of the track, traffic stopped, she's on the west side, they don't stop, and then peoples coming.
What is, what cross street is that, sir?
Railroad and Berry.
Railroad and Berry?
Yeah.
That's what we can do, is ask traffic, cuz traffic takes care of our crossing guards, to justify whether it needs two crossing guards or not.
I I really should make a point here, that that post, uh, at Railroad and Berry, at the track, was established, if you recall, there was a tragedy. Probably three years ago or so, there was no crossing guard there at all. Um, there was a, because of that tragedy, uh, a court, the the police department came to us. Wanted to establish a a crossing, a post there, but not a traditional post to cross children, cuz there isn't a need for that with the streets. But simply to guard the track.
Right.
And be on guard if a train should be uh approaching, and there were children in the area. That, you're right, I mean, it would be virtually impossible to control both sides of, you know, the street on both sides. But her function really is supposed to be to watch the track, that that's, that's the way it was designed. There was no crossing guard there at all, until we had, like I say.
What about her safety? This guy is hollering at her, he did, everybody will stop, he came around everybody and just, if she had stepped back, he would've hit her. Powdered out in the street, he was going too fast, but it's just a suggestion, I just, I'm looking at her, because. Soon as she get hit, that's be a liability to the city itself.
Unfortunately, crossing guards very often face, you know, careless drivers or worse, we had, we had someone else in here earlier tonight. Who told a story about a a truck nearly hitting her last year, uh, but but that, your your remarks are very well taken, there's no question about it. who told a story about a, a truck nearly hitting her last year, uh, but, but that, your, your remarks are very well taken, there's no question about it.
Okay, and the other item is, I'm more, I'm curious about, three seventy-first street.
I was talking, I was talking with, uh, Councilman Sims early today.
Uh, this guy got all kind of commercial stuff there, and I, I remember my stuff was towed away.
They're gone, they're gone, Mr. Williams, and the, I, I told Mr. Sims earlier, I owe you an apology, but not really, because I told you I would call you back, it was not settled until late today.
Okay.
But that property is completely cleared out, a number of citations were issued after you appeared at the last meeting. Uh, our inspectors went there, there was, the combination, I think there was some work being done on the property, a roof was being installed, and some trucks were being parked there illegally. The long and short of it is, the citations were issued, I believe a fine was paid, and everything is gone, if you go by there now, you'll see it's all been cleaned out.
Okay, apologies accepted, but I'm just saying, you know, it's just, I'm not really complaining, it's just that I think there should be a level ground for everybody.
True, you're right.
I had a motorcycle in front of my house, they told me to move my motorcycle, because it was considered, uh, a tractor nuisance, I did. Now, if you go down State Street, you see, uh, between, uh, Lodi and Kansas, on the, each side of the street, there's a motorcycle parked in front of a door. There's another house that has a, uh, car, a trailer, uh, what's it, what's that, speedboat on the water, those skidoo's? All in front of the house, I'm saying, I can't understand, that's on Main Street, on State Street, you can't see that, but you can see my house? And like I say, I get, they get on me a lot of times, they made me paint my, uh, chimney, they said it was, paint was, okay, I got up there in ninety-five, a hundred degree weather and painted it. I don't understand.
Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir.
I hate to cut you short, but you're over your five minutes, and we, we still have to go into closed session tonight, we still may have some other people have to talk, but, I thank you for your time. Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Seeing none, I'd like to close this, uh, public session, may I have a motion, please?
I'll offer.
All in favor, or roll call?
Councilman Vitalea? Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye.
Okay. At this time, uh, a motion to go into closed session. What's that? Oh, I'm sorry, before we do that, um, any comments from the council at this time?
No comments.
None, Mr. Canestrino?
Just quick, because I know we're in a hurry, um, nice to hear the appreciation for the street fair, it was a beautiful day, we were there as well, it looked like it was very well attended. Um, also happy to hear that you're seeing the progress on Anderson Street, I think we had, you know, DPW out there doing a good job, I think we, we've got a better schedule now for street cleaning, reinforcing a little bit more, getting the cars moved, I think that's gonna make a really, really big difference over there. Uh, happy to hear about you considering a, a local art fair in that park, years and years ago, I know, we spoke on the phone about this, years and years ago, Anderson Street was always a little bit artsy, and we had the antique shops, and they frequently had, um, local art fairs in that park right there, so I think that would be wonderful to try and bring some of that back into the community. Um, I'm excited to see we finally pass that news rack ordinance, thanks to, uh, attorney, Mr. Scrivo. Uh, I'm sorry that Mrs. Salvo isn't here, I mean, this should have been her night of glory, right, because she's been wanting that news rack ordinance for for however long, so I'm actually, I'm actually sorry she's not here to see it. She'll be here for the second reading, I'm sure, but also, you know, for some comments about Main Street and cleaning up things on Main Street, I think it'll make a big difference too, when we can get control of some of these news racks that are just eyesores and ran throughout the city. Again, thanks everyone for coming out, and thanks for your comments.
Mr. Sims?
No comment.
No comment, Ms. Greenman?
Just one thing, I wanna make it quick, um, thank everyone for coming, I'm glad you all come, bring your concerns to us. I'm glad to see everyone become like a family.
You're all here because they believe in you.
And we appreciate it, we're very proud that you do, and we take it seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Greenman. Street Fair was great, great weather, great crowd, uh, great band, I'm a, the Smithereens played, I'm a big Smithereens fan, so that was an extra added bonus for me, but it was well attended. Benders seemed to be doing well, and, uh, best part is, it was just great seeing so many people on Main Street. And, uh, kinda gave me a vision what, you know, though the street would be, you know, not full of people itself, what the crowded Main Street would be like uh, in years to come, because that's our, that's our, one of our biggest goals here as a council, is to, uh, really bring back Main Street. Things are, things are in full gear, moving, full steam ahead on, on that happening too. And on the other note, uh, everybody say a prayer tonight for the family of, of Mr. Jerry Song, because this truly was a, a tragedy. And, uh, I can't even imagine what, what the family feels like, so. With that, everybody have a good evening, safe trip home, thank you for coming, thank you.
We need to read the, the resolution.
Right. Your motion?
No.
No?
We need to do our, our resolution. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to discuss
They want me back here.
Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to discuss certain actions under section seven B seven and seven B eight of the Open Public Meetings Act which pertains to matters falling within attorney-client privilege and personnel matters concerning the employment of a current or prospective public employee. Whereas the discussion more specifically involves personnel issues which may or may not include various disciplinary matters and litigation. Any cases in particular? I'm sorry? I, I said personnel. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to exclude the public from this discussion. The outcome of the discussion will be disclosed within ninety days, or at such time as the interests of the city do not require confidentiality, need a motion?
Second.
Councilman Vitalea?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino? Councilman Sims? Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye.